And welcome to the regularly scheduled Nacogdoches City Council meeting, July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Williams, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, Mayor. May we pray. Dear only Father, we come together today to make decisions for the city of Nacogdoches. Lord, give us guidance that we may do that which you have given us to do and that we may do it decent and in order. Lord, let us not waver in our making of decisions. Lord, let us continue to work and strive to make Nacogdoches one of the beautiful cities there is. Lord, we already know that we have a lot of heritage here. And we want to make everyone that comes know that we're proud of where we live, where we work, and where we do our everyday being. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas' flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Any other open forum? Okay, next item is open forum. And I have filled out the proper documentation for open forum concerning last week's budget workshop. There was an article that was written in the, uh, our local paper, uh, party from last Saturday, July the twelfth, uh, that explained that we could possibly have a tax increase with a new fiscal year. We're right in the middle of this budget process and we don't know how much it's gonna be, if it's gonna be anything. So we kind of fill some numbers in and just to see kind of what we could do to, with our budget. One thing that did concern me about the article was I've always talked about that one cent sales tax that goes to the hospital district. And it is a big thing to me, and it should be to this whole city and everybody that lives here. Uh, I've had people tell me it's none of my business, leave it alone. Well, it is my business and it's everybody's business, so I probably won't leave it alone. Uh, the article said, uh, uh, the other pi- other penny goes to the county hospital district, a source of consternation of Mayor Randy Johnson, who on Thursday reminded the council that other cities, including Lufkin, use the one penny of sales tax for economic development. That's not the only thing that they use that one penny for. It's a very, very small portion of it. My point is, in that meeting, I specifically asked our finance director, if we had that nine million dollars back on sales tax annually that we give to the hospital district, what sort of impact would it make on our abhorrent taxes? And his answer was, this year, your abhorrent taxes was forty-seven cents per hundred dollars evaluation. If you had the nine million dollars back into the general revenue, your taxes would be seventeen cents. Now, that's a lot of money. That'll go a whole long way in helping us retain employees, fixing streets, building parks outside of what we've already got in place with the bond and possibly even grants. So I know my three minutes is probably already up. I just wanted to clarify that, that that was my main point is I wanted people in this town to know what kind of impact that one cent of sales tax does to the city of Nacogdoches. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, items to be removed from the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item D.
Anybody else?
Um, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda, um, except for item D as written.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Kathleen?
I should have told you ahead of time I was gonna do that, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to hear about, um, the runway and taxiway. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about how long it's actually gonna be. Have there been more discussions on that? You know, whether it's long enough for larger planes, or I just wanted a little update on that, what we're looking at.
Well, it's, it's very preliminary, um, but no, the scope did not necessarily include widening or lengthening the runway. It was purely to rehabilitate the runway we have. Most likely, uh, sealing the cracks, overlaying it with asphalt and restriping it. You know, theoretically getting another twenty, twenty-five years out of that runway. We're at the end of that cycle now with the runway we have. So that's primarily, and for the taxiways, most likely a seal coat, which would just, um, preserve the pavement, maybe add three to five years to the life of the pavement and then restripe it. Um, that, that's essentially the scope of the project. It'll, it'll morph as we get into the details of with it, once we hire a consultant and, and run, um, geotechnical tests on what we have. But that's the general scope of the project. We do have no idea the duration. Um, I've heard everything from six weeks to, to eight or ten or twelve for construction. It just depends on what that scope ends up being. And of course, weather and all the other supply chain issues that can affect construction. They, they were trying to get that project, um, designed and ready for construction for summer of, uh, two thousand twenty-five. They have since, after it went to commission, it was approved, but internally, um, they have decided to move that project, the construction part to, um, summer twenty-six, just to make sure all the ducks in a row and, and everything's been accounted for and ready, because we gave them a pretty specific mandate that that construction would, uh, better fit our airport and our stakeholders uh, in a specific summer construction window. Um, very important to people, uh, users, stakeholders like the, the Flight School. And so, um, between that and some, and, and over commitments on their end for projects, ours was one that got, um, I say bumped, just, it's been preliminarily scheduled for summer of twenty-six. I had previously spoke to you, um, that it may, uh, happen in the summer of twenty-five, but that's, doesn't look like it's gonna be the case.
Do, do, does this have anything to do with the bond money or no?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, our match, our ten percent match will be, uh, from bond funds. And those, those funds were, from what I understand, part of the, this maze.
Okay.
So it's sitting in the bank, ready to, ready to go.
Perfect.
Well, you answered my questions.
And I, and I didn't want to speak out of turn, but didn't text that effectively say, before we look at expanding the length, they really want us to deal with the current conditions first? Is, has it been the kind of the general undertone of the, why do this now?
When, when I, when we went to him and said, we have this, this, all this money now, they're, of course, they came right back to me and said, well, first we're gonna take care of, uh, safety items and, and the payment condition was the number one safety item. So we'll need to get past that before we make much headway with them on some of our ancillary projects like terminals and, and lengthening and widening the runway. And, and don't forget, we're also gonna, the other project that was approved to move forward with and, and your, is the other, there's two gr- uh, grant agreements you're approving tonight. The other one is for the airport layout plan update. And we will study the runway, uh, as part of that, the widening and lengthening of the runway, the feasibility, and, and we should come out of that with cost estimates. So I think this time next year, we'll have, once that plan is done, we'll have a much better feel for what, um, expansion and, and improvements are gonna look like out there after that plan is done. And you'll be part of, the, the public will have a chance to chime in on that plan. Um, but until they tell us it's not feasible, that the runway, uh, will be part of that overall a- airport layout plan, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you know, we all appreciate the grant participation in this, so, um, I move, unless anybody else has questions, um, I move to approve the, um, item D as written.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now into the regular agendas, uh, item six A, consider approval of proposed city policy for the issuance of trespass warnings to protect against unlawful and disruptive activity, activities and persons at city-owned buildings and property. City attorney.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jerry Baker, city attorney. What you have before you is proposed policy, uh, to be adopted by the city related to criminal trespass warnings. I want to give you a little background, so you understand why it's before you today, okay? Uh, so a few months back, I was, uh, contacted by Assistant Chief Kennedy, following a conversation that he and other members of NP, NPD had with members of the, um, county attorney's office. Okay, and it related to, um, certain case law that was out there related to essentially oral, um, policies related to any kind of criminal trespass warnings and their enforceability. And so, um, after discussing that with Chief Kennedy, I did a little research and looked at the case law that they were mentioning and some additional case law after the fact. And, um, you know, we, we, uh, kind of worked together with, uh, NPD and, uh, the, the county attorney's office to develop what's before you, and that's this proposed policy based on those decisions. And just to give you a little bit, uh, information about those decisions, they real, uh, they came out of the, the, uh, the Court of Appeals in Tax Arcana. The main decisions I looked at, and the main one was Anthony versus State, which is, uh, related to an unwritten policy that was, uh, essentially the court overturned a conviction, um, of, uh, a criminal conviction that, um, they were considering on that appeal. The court pointed out that because it was unwritten, um, the determinations made by the officers was arbitrary. There was no due process given to that, uh, that defendant, and so they overturned the conviction. I, I located a, uh, subsequent decision in that same court, um, that upheld a written, uh, policy. And the court pointed out that in that written policy, um, it, it listed the factors to assist the officers in making those decisions to issue a criminal trespass warning, as well as providing them guidelines and gave, uh, the defendant adequate warnings about what the violation was, what kind of notice he would, he would have with regards to future violations, as well as the opportunity to appeal that administratively. And so based on those, uh, decisions, as well as looking at other policies out there in other cities, we developed what for you today. Uh, and it's kind of give you an overview, if you want to look at that decision, I believe you have it in your packet. But, um, under, um, uh, paragraph four, which is on the second page, you'll see, uh, that it really starts with a, do you, you not have a pack? Okay.
Pull it out.
Okay.
On our phones or?
Did it not come, did you not receive it in your packet before the meeting? Okay.
I don't know that any of us printed it, but someone was brought our computers.
Describe it to you, I apologize to members of the council.
But we don't.
Um, uh, but, uh, I should have a copy for you, uh, for this meeting, so I apologize to you for that. But I'll just, I'll try to, uh, kind of describe it to you, so you get some understanding, because I know you've looked at it before you got to the meeting. But if you recall from, when, when you looked at it, there's, um, a, basically a procedure set forth, um, in the, uh, in the, in the policy itself. First begins with a verbal warning, okay? So a defendant is issued a verbal warning and then get, essentially given the opportunity to cease what they're doing, okay? Uh, whatever, whatever the violation may be, let's call it a noise violation, for example. If they refuse to obey to that, uh, warning, then the criminal trespass warning can be issued at that time. Now, it also lays out other things, you know, I mentioned no noise ordinance violations, but there could be other things, and some of those are listed in, in that policy as well. But als- there are also opportunities where it may be such that if there's a criminal, you know, like a federal or state criminal offense that's been committed, or if there's, uh, injury to a person or to property, that you could skip that step and just automatically go to the issuance of the criminal, uh, trespass warning. It, it includes, the policy includes the contents of what that warning must, must include, the reasons for someone's exclusion from the property, the area that they're excluded from, the duration that they would be excluded from, uh, that, that part of the property. And it describes what they need to do to, if they feel that they've been wrongly, uh, given this warning, that they can, uh, seek an administrative review of that. So essentially, uh, what it does is meets all those checkboxes that the courts pointed out in those two decisions I mentioned to you, okay? So we wanted to cover all our bases on that. As I mentioned, I worked with, um, NPD and the county attorney's office to try to come up something that's workable, but also enforceable under the law. And that's what we have before you. And I'm willing to take any questions you may have, but also Chief Kennedy is here as well. So if you have any questions for him, he's, he's able to answer those questions.
So, um, will this help with the park and curfew violations? I noticed that was one of the items and, 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 I mean, because I know we've had people stay after hours.
Sure.
And do we have to have the hours posted?
Well, I mean, it, it, they don't have to be necessarily posted out there at the park, but at least, at least somebody's given notice of it. Like I said, you know, the first step, of course, is giving somebody a verbal notification. So if, if one of the officers gets, um, you know, a call and they respond to somebody out there at the park after hours or something along those lines, um, you know, their first step is to give them a verbal warning, say, hey, you know, parks are closed, you need to, you know, you need to remove yourself. If they refuse to listen, that's when the next parts of the, the policy, uh, come into effect at that time.
Uh, one of the thing, reasons I'm asking that is because of the problem at Maroni Park with the, you know, setting fire to the playground equipment. And, um, and I know I've been asked about that, about
Right.
if we have hours or curfews or, you know, and also security measures.
So I, I don't know that there was any discovery with what caused, I mean, who caused that or how that was caused, uh, you know, I think arson was the thought, uh, but I don't know if that was ever confirmed. That's somebody, that's some, for NPD to answer on that one, but.
Well, I know you're just trying to clean up the, the language and make sure that what we have is enforceable.
It's more than, you know, right now, what we have is essentially an unwritten policy, which I don't believe, based on the case law, is enforceable. So if somebody were arrested for violation of that unwritten policy, then I think they could, based on that case law, have it overturned their conviction, okay? And then, and so what we're trying to do is put something into effect that would be enforceable. Um, and that if, uh, you know, if it, they did take it up on appeal based on these factors that are being met in this policy, I hope and I think, based on the case law, that it would, you know, those convictions would be upheld.
So what you saying that all the CTs that have been issued up to this point are null and void?
I wouldn't say that per se. I would just say that there is a possibility that if someone were to challenge that, they received a criminal trespass based on that policy, um, that it's possible that they would not be upheld.
All right. I understand.
So when we put multiple, um, electricity and water outlets down in Festival Park for festivals and things, I don't know if that electricity is on when you go down there or if it turned on and off, or waters turned on and off. But if it is a continuous thing, if somebody just pulled a trailer up or a camper up and refused to leave, would that go under this law? Because there's a lot of electricity and, and people talk about squatting these days and all that stuff.
Well, there's, that's also, there's a tra- you know, um, uh, there are squatting laws as well. I mean, for somebody who is camping in a park or something like that, when they don't have authority to do so. So there is additional laws on top of which, what this would provide. But yeah, I mean, if they're, you know, in violation of any, any rules related to the park, you know, again, they would get that warning, and then failure to obey, abide by that warning then would, was, would subject them to that issuance of the, the criminal trespass.
Thanks.
Well, to answer this question, every time that I've used Festival Park, you've had to get somebody from Public Works or someone to turn it on.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
It's not left on.
That makes sense. Uh, like I said, Assistant Chief Kennedy's here, if you have any questions for him as well?
We'd love to hear from you, but I think this is great. This is, I, I don't have any questions.
Leave anything out that you would like to add to?
Oh, he's coming up, so. It's okay, we all have it pulled up now.
Counsel, Mayor, Assistant Chief Bill Kennedy. Really, the, the, the main scope of this is that, one, it ensures that we're able to actually ban people from city property if we have to, uh, and that that is legally enforceable. But it also makes sure that those people who are taxpayers and have a legal right to those properties that they technically own as a taxpayer have a way to not only make sure the due process of them getting the warning is correct, but to be able to go to the city manager's office and have this very spelled out way of taking, having that, that warning lifted, should we have made the wrong decision or a department had made the wrong decision or whatever. That's, that's really what this is intended to do and bring us in compliance with what the courts have asked. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you both.
Item six B, receive a presentation on the two thousand twenty-four Texas Blueberry Festival. Ms. Kelly Augustine and company.
Well, she told me I was gonna have to do this first, okay? So my name is, uh, Grace Anne Lurwelt, and I want to wish you a good evening, Councilman Mayor, and I hope that y'all have had a great day, this very hot day. Thank you for letting me in. Um, I'm the executive director of Millard's Crossen Historic Village, and I am the current chair of the Texas Blueberry Festival. And I want to thank you guys for everything that you guys do for Nacogdoches and for the Texas Blueberry Festival. And thank you for letting us come in and do our presentation this evening. I am following my notes, so I don't get it right here. This was our thirty-fourth, thirty-fourth, that's a long time for a festival to run at Nip. So it was the thirty-fourth, fourth year, and it was presented by Tipton Ford. And the city of Nacogdoches is an important partner for us. So everyone in this room, you guys back there, all of y'all, um, the CVB, um, all the city officials, PD, uh, Nacogdoches Fire Department, CVB, City Works, Park Recreation, and anyone that has a position within the city that has come together and actually helped us and stepped up to the plate and said, what do you need from us? Or a last minute change, and they were able to take care of that for us. That's something that we appreciate and look forward to our partnership in the, in the coming years. What we have done is a quick calculation on during our planning phase of who also plays a large role in the festival. More than sixty businesses and organizations spent months, months planning and working on this year's event. That doesn't even take into account the two hundred plus vendors that we had, or the volunteers, and there's a lot of them. You know, it takes a big team and organization to make the Texas Blueberry successful time and time again. Um, the festival also gives activity planners, such as us, an opportunity and all the business owners, an opportunity to fundraise and showcase what they do. And, uh, like the nonprofits, lets them come in and do what they need to do as well. Am I supposed to be hitting this button? Uh-huh. Sorry about that. I'm just quickly going on. You. Jeez, thank you. I'm terrible with the buttons, okay? Um, we are so glad to offer the traditional favorites. As you can see here, we have Tipton Ford, we have the Pet Parade, we have music. Our cloggers were back this year. If you didn't have an opportunity to come out, you missed them, because they were back this year. We had our pancakes, every traditional that you can think of. The Tipton Ford F-one Festival Truck Photo Op was out. They also set up the Sas- Sasquatch Downtown, um, and they set up a rock wall, and that was in city parking. That was the Road Adventure Club Hangout in the city parking, in the four hundred block. The rock climbing wall was new this year, and it was free. So everybody got to get up there and do that, if they wanted to, not me, mm, nope. Um, we had our, uh, blueberry cupcake battle by Family Crisis Center of Texas, Blue Pies Smiling at Me Pie Eating Contest by Matt Williams Heating, Cooling and, uh, plumbing. Hey, come on. There you go, it wasn't going. Um, the fresh blueberries for sale by Berkshire Brothers Region Bank was able to open the blueberry soda sweet shop again this year in the two hundred block, which we were very grateful for, because we were looking for a place frantically to have that again. We also had our live stages right back here. Next year, I hope to add another stage back in down in Festival Park, and they were sponsored by XLR. The best blueberry pancakes, like we said, with the Kiwanis cooking up the blues. Demonstrations were held, uh, in the visitor's center. And also, Ashley, I definitely want to thank you again. She helped orchestrate having a nursing room, a cool place for mothers to go, uh, to be able to nurse their babies. We also had more vendors and more events, as far as we can tell, more people in Festival Park this year than ever. I don't know, how many of you guys come out? It was busy down in Festival Park. We had the Festival, uh, Park with giant inflatables, Suds Pits, and those were done by AMP Inflatables. The Vehicle Fun Case Car Show, that was one of the biggest car shows we had since we moved it down. And that was sponsored by Motor Homes of Texas and RV Outfitters, Fiberglass of Texas, and then KSWP, KAVX Kids Obstacle Course in Cool Zone, and the Blue Wash-up Board Tournament, sponsored by Batters Law. And then there was, uh, other things happening outside of the brick streets, and that was our running of the blueberries. It was a five K, ten K, and a one mile, and it was ran by Parks and Recreation. And I think I saw them here earlier, and they're gone. Uh, the forty-two tournament, the pickleball, and all these have different people than, and organizations that the funds that they raise go towards. Uh, you have the Salvation Army for the forty-two tournament, and then we have, um, the Pick Your Own Blueberries, and that was sponsored by E- Eaton Cooper Power System and the Blueberry Festival of Quilts by the Nacogdoches Quilters Guild. I'm good? I'm going too fast on the slide. I didn't bring my reading glasses either. And here are the exciting updates that was new for the additions. For a long time, we talked about something and bringing in something, and we did it this year. It was, and I'm gonna be straight up and honest, it was the most exciting thing to have happen, but also disappointing. It wasn't as big or, but the poor kid had his whole deck, deck of scars stacked against him. I mean, first it, it rained and rained and rained. Then he brought his truck out with one, it broke. The next day, he totaled his vehicle, and then when he set up, was trying to set up the largest ride, the hydraulic pump went out. And I said, man, bless your heart, he just had it all against him. But actually, people did get to get out and enjoy it. And we had Cool Zones Downtown, and that was by Free Air, Fair as Heating and AC. And then, choo, 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 choo. What did y'all think about the murals? Painting? Who went and seen that, who did it? Ah, okay, so you got a little, little certificate and you got to paint. You're forever a part of the, the Texas Blueberry Festival that way in Nacogdoches. The, the tours were really, really good, and it helped bring people to see. The, the tours were really, really good and it helped bring people to see the artwork. The Blueberry Game Bounty Hunters was new, that was a scavenger hunt. And that was something fun for everyone to get to go and look at stuff. Different places like Millard's Crossing was a part of that as well. So it was businesses outside of the Brick Streets. Because we're a community and we want people to go out and look at more businesses besides. So you can see on the slide how you had to go find that little emoji. And then, um, Tipton Ford continues to contribute to the festival and support us. And they have continued for several years and we are very, very grateful to them. Our Blue Diamond sponsor is X L E R and the Blue Sapphire sponsor, Freira's Heating and A C. And then we had a new broadcast sponsor. And it was created for Optimum, they came in last minute. So we wanted to make sure that they had a sponsorship level. And they broadcasted on Kix one oh five and K Fox ninety-five from nine into noon on Festival Day. And then we also had, uh, S F A, S U Nelson, Rush College of Business, Arnold Center for Entrepreneurship. And then they were our vendor's shuttle sponsor, trying to get all these sponsors and not leave someone out. When I said and I look back and I look at you guys, everyone around here is invested into the Texas Blueberry Festival. Every one of us. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly and let her give her things.
Thank you, Grace, appreciate you. Um, I'm Kelly Augustine, I work at the Nacogdoches County Chamber of Commerce. I too wanna thank all of you for the service you give to Nacogdoches as well as the support you give to the Texas Blueberry Festival. Uh, I'll start with the most asked question the chamber receives. We could probably all recite it together. How many people were at the festival? You may already be aware that an event with no ticket sales or gate entrance creates a challenge to counting people. Add to that, we hold an eight hour event with people coming and going all through the day. Plus, the festival has offsite events that attract attendees with specific special interests. Well, maybe we can't count every human being who enjoys the Texas Blueberry Festival, but thanks to shared data collected by our Texas Forest Trail Executive Director Dell Polacritus, we can count electronic devices, better known as cell phones. Y'all might remember this from last year's report. Dell has access to technology that counts unique cell phones that enter a determined area or space during a certain time or date. You'll see in the visual that we are looking at the areas along West and East Maine on Saturday, June eighth, twenty twenty-four. The number of unique cell phones his source reports for this specific area on June eighth is seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine. Let's make a side note that this is up from the fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six number Dell provided us for last year's festival. Again, this isn't the exact number of visitors because not every person totes a cellphone or even festival participants, but it does help justify the chamber's claim that the event attracts twenty thousand people. Other points you might like to consider, this report does not include the Friday, June seventh date when the Blueberry Festival Carnival opened. Also, the designated footprint does not include Festival Park in its entirety with the car shows, participants, the carnival crowd and other events Grace mentioned earlier. Or the Blueberry Festival quilts located at Fredonia Hill Baptist Church with more than six hundred attendees, including visitors from nine states outside of Texas. Or at the Blueberry Place where twelve hundred and sixty-three pounds of blueberries were picked by what farm owner Sherry Randall determined that they entertained the most visitors she's ever had on one day and the most first time pickers ever. Plus, there is much more data collected through the Texas Forest Trail Report and all of that has been shared with Executive Director Ashley Morgan at Visit Nacogdoches. We don't have an economic impact report for you today because not all of the numbers have come in that we need for that. Ashley and I have discussed that and Visit Nacogdoches is very generous to share the information available to them with the chamber and we plan to include it in our chamber's annual report that you and all chamber members will see at the annual meeting in September. All right, the next few slides here will focus on how the chamber leveraged available technology to promote the event in new ways. This was made possible by the additional support from a good number of festival sponsors and offerings from local media outlets. We always go to the chamber members and our local businesses for any products and services we need and that applies to promotions as well. In addition to the broadcast, print and electronic advertising placed with local media companies, including several radio and television stations for broadcast, the Daily Sentinel, Charm Magazine, around the town for print, we were able to expand our reach into new areas. To utilize our marketing dollars effectively, we discussed the plan with Visit Nacogdoches to make sure we weren't targeting areas that they already cover. So we were going for towns and, and areas and communities that don't already see a lot of advertising for the festival. And I don't know if this video will play when I click this, so I'm not, um, okay, let me just go ahead and finish my statement. And we placed it in Waco and surrounding areas. Uh, this ad, nope, it does not play. You'll have to go to the Facebook page and watch it. Uh, that ad was viewed by people watching streaming video on smart TVs in their home as well as on handheld devices. Over the thirty days, the video reached an average of three thousand three hundred two households, that's a day, four to five times a day, and it appeared mostly on connected TV devices between five and ten P M. And we are thrilled to report that when shown on a website, fifty-two percent watched the end without skipping. So I included this slide just because I think it is so cool. These are the channels where that ad was being played. And the circles, uh, when you look at the little circles, you can see how long the ad was allowed to run before they moved away from it. So most are ninety percent or above. All right, now for our beefed up event promotions through Town Square Media. Listed are the four elements of the branding campaign for awareness. I'd like to focus on the streaming TV ads. Similar to what we did through the Sentinel, the same ad was again shown on smart TVs in the East Texas area. You'll see that the ad ran more than sixty-six thousand times and the completion rate was almost ninety-eight percent. I'm telling you, people love that ad. As of the digital display ads, we've been doing these for a couple of years and the interesting thing about this is the ad is designed to promote the festival or a specific event at the festival and the sponsor attached to the event. So here's the visuals, those are the ads. And what was noted on the previous slide was that the click through rate was twenty-five percent and our friends at Town Square let us know that that's almost three times the national average of point oh nine percent. So those kind of stats are good news for our festival and for the businesses who sponsor. And I hope you don't think I'm overstating when I say good for Nacogdoches. What I hope to communicate to you tonight is that the chamber pays a lot of attention to how we advertise the Texas Blueberry Festival. In addition to informing and raising awareness of a festival, we are highlighting our town. This festival is family friendly, offers free admission for all to enjoy and is a positive, creative, far-reaching opportunity for businesses to utilize in their marketing plans. Not everyone in the world can come to Nacogdoches on the second Saturday in June, we'll admit that. But I think that an effective advertising campaign with the festival as the foundation can attract more folks who like the looks of what this festival represents in the oldest town in Texas. What's next? This year, the chamber invested in Texas, Texas Festival and Tourism Consulting for a professional evaluation and along with event organizers, volunteers and attendees suggestions. We have a lot to consider. Discussions have begun and festival planning is ongoing. So I'd like to invite you to offer your suggestions, your concerns, your observations because we value your input and we treasure your support. And with that, I will turn it back over to our festival chair, Grace.
And I'm not gonna try to bore you by reading anymore because I'm not very good at that. So what I am gonna do is reiterate what she said. We do want your input and we do want to know what our city thinks. Because in order to have and to continue to have a great, successful festival, we need everybody's input. Are we gonna take everybody's and say, yeah, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do that? Probably not. But are we gonna take it and look at it and say, yeah, this might make it better? Or this looks good and take a piece of this and take a piece of that? Just like you do when you're at a mortgage board, you take a piece here, a piece there and you make it better, right? You make your plate better. Well, that's what we're looking to do for, um, you know, next year's event. Our next year's Texas Blueberry Festival, let's make thirty-five great and let's have fun with it. You know, let's get out there and play around and see what we can do to make it the best festival, number thirty-five. Now, that is all I have to say from me and that was just me. Do y'all have any questions?
I, I think our mayor should be out there flipping pancakes though. That's my one comment, along with our city manager. I think the two of them need to flip pancakes next year.
You need to take care of that end of that table down there.
I'm thinking, I'm feeling all of you out there. Well, what about a dunking tank for them? For everyone, a dunking tank?
They all know, big, just horrible, you know?
Just horrible, now come on, you're talking to an old agent.
You just stay down there in your lane.
Do you guys have any questions, honey? All right, well, thank you.
And that our family were the first blueberry pickers in the whole, that entire day.
You did.
Like in the history of Nacogdoches or?
No, no, that morning, we got up there at six forty-five, we were up on the.
I will tell you something I did, uh, I was a judge for one of the, uh, for the quilts.
That's right.
I bought it.
Did you buy it?
It was my choice and, uh, uh, she was from, uh, she drove here from Denver. And, uh, and she, I asked her if she wanted to sell it. She said, yeah, it's just gonna be kinda expensive and I said, well, she told me and I said, okay, so.
Here you go.
Got it on my bed.
This was the first year I got to judge them and it was so fun. And just to see all that work and detail that goes into them is just crazy. So we won't have them next year, but the following, yeah, it's every other year. And we miss them when we don't have them because it's a lot of fun to go and see them.
Mr. Beverlyland has something to say, I think he's going to do flipping pancakes.
Is the dunking tank blueberry syrup?
Oh, yeah.
Now you're talking.
Cause I already look like a Oompa Loompa, but if you dunk me in it, I guarantee I do.
That sounds very classy.
Blueberry syrup in your dunking tank?
Long as I get to go first.
Um, if, if that's it, can we have y'all down here to present you the?
Much for your hard work, really.
You're welcome. Here we go, one, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Some Mexican food, probably. See that?
Okay, that include, uh, concludes the regular agenda. Uh, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section, Code five five point zero seven four. We will convene into executive session at six fourteen. Thank you very much, we'll be back shortly. It is, uh, seven, I'm sorry, six forty-seven. I present to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven four. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension and amendment of agreement for professional services and employment as city attorney of Mr. Jerry Baker.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This meeting is adjourned and God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas and this country.